Good morning. We are going to call this meeting to order and open session. Director Hunter, would you like to make any announcement?
Oh, yes. Because we just have the one presentation day, what we'll be doing is listen to the presentation first and then taking the public comment after. That way you're able to hear what's in the presentation prior to your comments. So we appreciate your understanding.
Yeah, I have a question on procedure. So there really isn't any public comment except comments to decide. So after presentation, we'll come back to the board for technical questions and then we'll open it to comments?
Yeah. I guess I should have said not public comment, but comments by the public.
For the presentation. And I want people to listen. So, thank you. Director Hunter, would you listen to the public?
We have to. Can you join me? Buddy, would you?
The need is to abide our United States of America and the United Republic of America's one millionth God and to the world's political leaders.
These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request them. An item being heard out of order. There is only one item, so we'll go right into it. Good morning, Director Hunter. I'm just gonna do my presentation. I'm sorry. I'll read, I'll go ahead and read if we can. 1.1, discuss the draft environmental impact report, EIR, for the commercial cannabis program and direct staff to: 1. Modify the draft EIR project description to expand the commercial cannabis program and recirculate the report. 2. Move forward with a modified project. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director. I'm also accompanied today by Derek Cole, outside legal counsel for CEQA, and David Colbeck, Environmental Compliance Specialist. Just a quick introduction to today's meeting. Prior to this meeting, we've held three meetings to receive additional public input on the draft EIR. Those meetings were held on September 26 in Hayfork, that was a planning commission meeting, November 19 to December 11 with the board supervisors in Weaverville. Direction to staff from the board supervisors at the December 11 meeting was to come back to provide options based on community input received to date, provide more information regarding raising or removing the current cultivation license cap of 530, and revising the project description, and discuss the pros and cons and the timeline of proceeding with the existing draft EIR. A point to emphasize today, and this has come up several times in our meetings and conversations, the EIR is not policy in itself. It's an environmental document. It's the evaluation and analysis of our cannabis program in this case. It's a process. It's intended to evaluate the existing program, this draft EIR, reveal environmental impacts, and suggest mitigation measures to address those impacts. It's not intended to fix the past impacts to the environment, but to avoid or lessen the impacts moving forward. The EIR provides options. It is a role of the planning commission and board supervisors to choose what path the EIR will take, and make substantive changes to the shape and program and create future The ordinance is the policy. The ordinance is what's driving this process. Upon certification in the EIR is the goal that the ordinance amendment will combine the existing ordinances into one ordinance. And will include mitigation measures and performance measures. Other changes that could occur with the ordinance that would have no additional environmental impact would be possibly a multi-year license provision, establishment of process for opt-out areas, identification of exclusion areas due to zoning, topographic, hydrologic, and geologic considerations, and revision of the cannabis cultivation setback variance As currently drafted, the EIR, the draft EIR, has four alternatives that are presented. Alternative 1 is a no-project alternative. Alternative 2 is a citing limitation for commercial cannabis sites. Alternative 3 is restricted commercial cannabis cultivation, and alternative 4 is reduce commercial cannabis operations. I wanted to focus on alternative 1 for just a moment. Alternative 1 is the no-project alternative. That means the current ordinances would remain in place should this alternative be chosen. The ordinance is not revised. The EIR once certified acknowledges environmental impacts, and each license requires independent CEQA review because no mitigations were adopted with the ordinance. Again, it's just as-is, business-as-usual, acknowledgement of environmental impacts without the incorporation or adoption of any mitigation measures to lessen those impacts. Staff does not recommend this alternative. Another matter regarding alternatives in the draft EIR moving forward, alternatives can be adjusted by the board supervisors prior to or at the time of certification of the environmental document if recirculation is not required. The board supervisors may consider and adopt alternative language with stating the justifications and findings at the time of certification. Also justification must be stated to adopt or reject each of the alternatives in the So, we're to the options. Staff has provided two options to the board for consideration today. The first option is to modify the draft EIR project description to expand the cannabis program, which would require rewriting and recirculation of the draft EIR. The second option is to move forward with the completion of the EIR process of the cannabis program with the current project description and draft EIR with minor revisions to produce the final EIR and complete the ordinance amendments. Option 1, we'll go over the fine points, the pros and cons of option 1. Option 1 would modify the draft EIR to include an increase in the license cap or removal of the license cap even. The draft EIR would be reanalyzed, and the entire document, or possibly just sections, would need to be recirculated. The cap increase would, of course, include conditions such as existing sites and CUPs for cultivation of non-agricultural zone parcels. An addition modifications would be possible. The next steps with option 1, should it be chosen, would be to rewrite the project description to increase the license numbers, reanalyze and rewrite the effective draft EIR sections, circulate the amended sections for the public comment, and respond to comments, produce the final EIR, and after certification amend the ordinance to reflect the final The pros, the benefits of going with, potential benefits going with option 1. The EIR may reflect desired changes to the ordinance and program, looks forward to the future of the cannabis program. The increased cap may capture the spirit and intent of the cannabis ordinance to provide opportunities for legal operations or those that would like to become legal. It may bring more cannabis operations onto the weekend market and would recognize the reduced environmental impact of legal operations compared to illegal operations. The cons of option 1. The timeline is a major deterrent on this option. The certification of final EIR would likely not be possible until late 2020. The EIR may not be used for license tiering until complete, certified. The EIR, excuse me, significant increase in staff and consultant costs. The cost of, cost estimate we have from our consultant, and this does not include staff time, in-house staff time, nor legal assistance on this matter, just the cost from the consultant would be around $100,000. The required CEQA review conducted for each cannabis license application would be needed. That's each license, because we don't have an environmental document in place. That'd be a negative declaration for the state, a potential subsequent negative declaration for the county. The expense and time to complete the CEQA review for each license would definitely slow the process down for issuing licenses and be an initial burden on the cultivators. Each CEQA document would need to be approved by the planning commission as well, which also adds additional time for the public hearing and to move that item to the planning commission for review. The estimated timeframe for this, for option 1 would be approximately 275 days, and still this is ambitious, very ambitious. Depending on the planning commission and board supervisors' meetings, should an item be continued, more information requested for staff to return with, that could easily escalate that number. A rewrite of the project description to increase license numbers, approximately 30 days, reanalyze and rewrite the effective draft environmental sections, 60 days, circulate the amended sections for public comment, 45 days, respond to comments, produce the final EIR, 20 days. Very ambitious, but that's the minimum. Certification, that's the planning commission board supervisors' meetings, minimum of 60 days, and amend the ordinance to reflect the final EIR, 30 days. That 30 days does not also include taking it to the planning commission and the board for approval. That's just getting it drafted. Option 2. Option 2 is to move forward with the completion of the EIR process and cannabis program ordinance amendments with the current draft EIR. This may include modifications of the mitigations and proposed alternatives. The next steps would be in this process to produce the final EIR, a planning commission advisory meeting or supervisor certification meeting, publish the final EIR, and amend the ordinance reflecting the certified final EIR. The pros to this option are that, the timeline again, the factor of time. It'd be the earliest possible programmatic CEQA coverage for our program. It would take into consideration the 2020 licensing season and would not require recirculation. By having a certified environmental document in place, we'd have a streamlined application process with a county tiering document in place, and a certified EIR becomes the basis for future program amendments. In addition, the pros of, the pros of option number 2, the potential benefits are that the EIR may be added to in the future if needed. Mitigation and alternatives, again, can be modified in the EIR. That was mentioned earlier. I want to emphasize that point. Some data and assumptions can be modified. We have lower staff and consultant costs with this option and less impact to the ongoing commercial cannabis program. Just simply do not have the same interruptions that option 1 would present. The cons for this option is that it does not allow for a license cap increase above 530, and may require a supplemental EIR addendum for future ordinance changes. And with that, I also want to add that that would be the same with going with option 1. Once you have a certified document, you're always gonna require, you know, possibly have need of a supplemental EIR addendum for future ordinance changes. That's just how the EIR works. The timeframe for option 2 is approximately 150 days, depending, again, on planning commission meetings and board supervisors' meetings and ability of staff to meet these deadlines. Produce, production of the final EIR, approximately 50 days. Planning commission advisory meeting, 30 days. Board supervisor certification meeting, minimum 30 days. Publishing of final EIR, 10 days. And amend ordinance to reflect final EIR, 30. And this is also ambitious, but the importance of getting this document wrapped up, we have ambitious timelines. Staff recommendation today for your consideration is that the board supervisors directs planning staff to move forward with the completion of the EIR process with the current project description and draft EIR with minor revisions to produce the final EIR and complete the ordinance amendments. In addition, recommendation is to consider a modified alternative 2 that provides for the current cap of 530 licenses. With that, I conclude my presentation. Ladies and gentlemen and back supervisors, for any concern for your health and welfare and fire safety, we would ask that you would clear the doorway area and please find a seat, and we can take a moment if you need to move some chairs around.
Okay. Just a quick question. You did cover it, Kim. The original draft came out with 280 licenses, but at a previous meeting we said, eh, we're really uncomfortable with that since the policy is based on 530. So this proposal that you're recommending will not affect, we will be able to stay at the 530 without major disruption.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that's clear, so it's not, I was uncomfortable with the much lower number.
I guess before I even make a comment, I should disclose that I do hold a 10,000-square-foot mixed-light cannabis permit, but the state has given me the ability to partake in the discussion on the EIR and also vote on the decision of the EIR as long as it's not specifically related to my specific permit type. So I'm just curious, what is the current number of licenses in the program?
We're at 314 right now, is my understanding, or near that. It changes daily.
And when, is there any anticipation of, if either one of the two options is approached, will this affect the licensing process for this upcoming season? And so how?
Overall, not having an environmental document in place is affecting the process. Again, we're asking each individual, especially the provisional licenses, to start completing an individual site-specific CEQA right now. There'll be ongoing effects and it'll just multiply as time goes on, I believe.
I would, I would concur. We're a couple of years into the program, and at this stage, we haven't really done any systematic analysis of the environmental impacts of the program. The original window that we were dealing with under what was then known as SB 97 would have had us finish at the end of this past year. And so when we're granting licenses, and that was the timeframe that we were looking at to have a program document in place, that gave us one sort of perspective, but now if we're gonna keep kicking this back without a programmatic document in place, it just, it's not good for, for the program, it's not good for the growers, because it could potentially interfere with their ability to not only move forward and get the licenses here, but also interface with the state when they go with their licenses there.
And do you know, just off the top of your head, what an approximate CEQA process would be for an individual on a, let's just say a 10,000 or, or greater? Is there a ballpark figure?
It varies so much depending on the site. We're talking thousands of dollars, of course, but it could range, you know, just our fee is, you know, over $1,000. That's just in-house. You're paying a consultant. Yeah. It could range anywhere from 2,000 to 5,000 most likely.
So is there kind of a connection, like by utilizing the county, EIR process is a grower theoretically saving money on not having to do this process on their own and saving time of having to start this process on their own?
Yes, this document would, if, if they have to do a CEQA, a site-specific CEQA analysis, it would, it would. I'm gonna defer to David. This is a question I'd like to, for him to answer.
Okay.
Before I tumble too much.
So David Colbeck, Environmental Compliance Department of Transportation. I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
It would expedite the time.
Expedite otherwise. If they don't have to do CEQA, if this does, it's.
David, is this saving time on behalf of the grower? Saving time and money?
If the EIR is complete, yes. It's a programmatic EIR, so it's meant to cover the entire program, so that any license that's issued underneath that program, this is meant to streamline that for the individual applicant. So that process would not go through, say, the same environmental review, because that happened with the EIR. It would just have to, any individual applicant would adhere to their valid mitigations that are applying to their site. That is the only requirement of them. Once that is all documented and are compliant with the EIR, you are essentially ready to go. However, if this is not in place, if there is no programmatic EIR, that's where CEQA compliance must happen individually on the individual site. That can run a damage from anywhere from the CE to negative declaration to an EIR for each individual site.
Do you know approximately what the percentages have been on the licenses that have been processed, of which ones were of those categories?
There were roughly, I want to say, 100 categorical exemptions that were issued last season to individual applicants. There were somewhere around 150 provisional licenses that were provided that would require additional CEQA review, projecting towards, say, 250 perhaps. There may be 150 provisional licenses that would be issued in the 2020 season that would require additional CEQA review that likely would go to the level of mitigated negative declaration. There's a chance that some of those could require a hierarchical exemption, but that type of review would have to be documented for each individual license applied to the county, the justification built, and the subsequent environmental document created.
Thank you. That was good.
I'm not sure who wants to answer this. Keith, do you have any questions?
We are contracted with Ascent to be our consultant. Do you know when the contract with Ascent is terminated?
The contract expired on December 31.
December 31.
Of 2019. They're out of contract right now. And one of the slides that mentioned, you know, amending the contract with Ascent, we've been holding off, because we're not sure how to write that scope of work at this point until we get direction from the board.
Okay. Can you explain the context of piecemealing? So we, the board and the participants in the audience would understand that you, we can't do a temporary in order to get what we want with a permanent later, a piecemealing?
Sorry, I don't.
David, do you know?
I don't understand the question.
Maybe I can. So the concept in CEQA is, is that piecemealing is a concept where you chop up a project and you, an overall project, and you make each piece of it look smaller than it is in whole, and it's what's called a fallacy of division, which is you make the whole look less because you're chopping it into little bits and pieces and saying, well, this is okay, this is okay, this is okay. Well, the totality of all of them together may not be okay. That's a rough explanation of piecemealing. Each license application is a project, and, and so we're not, we're not piecemealing the license applications. We are treating them each as a project, and we're requiring an appropriate level of review, whether it's a categorical exemption or as was indicated, potentially an initial study and mitigated net deck. But the concern is that without, I mean, maybe I could approach it this way, without a programmatic document, looking at each, each license application individually, we're losing the perspective of the whole. And, and that can affect the ability to grant individual licenses, because we're not looking systematically at the impact across the county. So maybe I might, I may not be answering your question, Madam Chair, but that's the idea, is to do it systematically, and we avoid chopping it up into little pieces to diminish possibly the environmental impacts of the whole action. If that, if that answers your question.
Yes. So if it was the board's pleasure to, to have ordinance in the future that looks different than the ordinance that we have now, because the draft EIR is based basically on the ordinance, would there be a conflict if this EIR is accepted to change the ordinance?
In order to adopt an ordinance, we would need to adopt the mitigation measures of the EIR, or we would need to make findings that the mitigation is not feasible. So if, let's say, the EIR says, here are 50 mitigation measures that will lessen the impacts of all of these areas that we've studied, the ordinance would need to have all 50 of those impacts, of those mitigation measures incorporated unless two things. One, we, we adopt a finding that a particular mitigation measure is not feasible, and feasibility can involve cost and economics that, you know, it's just simply too expensive and not achievable, and that it doesn't accomplish the objectives of the project. And then there's also what we call override considerations, which is that there are certain impacts that cannot be mitigated below a point of significance, and there are social and economic and other benefits to the project that, that justify adopting the project, even though certain aspects of it will not be mitigated to a point of insignificance. And so all of that is to say that the EIR is intended to lead to an action. The EIR is intended to say, there's an ordinance that, you have an existing ordinance, we've studied the existing ordinance, and now here are all the ways it can be improved to address the environmental impacts. We then need to take all of those areas of improvement. on the ordinance, would there be a conflict if this EIR is accepted to change the ordinance?
In order to adopt an ordinance, we would need to adopt the mitigation measures of the EIR, or we would need to make findings that the mitigation is not feasible. So, if, let's say, the EIR says, "Here are 50 mitigation measures that will lessen the impacts of all of these areas that we've studied," the ordinance would need to have all 50 of those impacts, of those mitigation measures incorporated, unless two things, one, we, we adopt a finding that a particular mitigation measure is not feasible, and feasibility can involve cost and economics that, you know, it, it's just simply too expensive and not achievable, and that it doesn't accomplish the objectives of the project. And then there's also what we call override considerations, which is that there are certain impacts that cannot be mitigated below a point of significance, and there are social and economic and other benefits to the project that, that justify adopting the, the project, even though certain aspects of it will not be mitigated to a point of insignificance. And so, all of that is to say that the EIR is intended to, to lead to an action. The EIR is intended to say, there's an ordinance that, you have an existing ordinance, we've studied the existing ordinance, and now here are all the ways it can be improved to address the environmental impacts. We then need to take all of those areas of improvement and either adopt them into the ordinance, find them infeasible, or where there's overriding considerations we need to make, we need to document in the record why we're doing that. But there is some action that has to be taken. We have to adjust the ordinance. It's not just adopting the report.
I also want to add with the piecemealing, my memory is refreshed on piecemealing, is you lose sight of the cumulative impacts. When you're looking at the program as a whole, you also are, are looking at the cumulative impacts that, that occur with the program, and that's a very important piece of the environmental analysis.
And the slideshow showed that between the draft and the final, that there could be minor changes. Can you give an example or shed any light on what that may look like?
Changes, again, I'm going to differ on this one. I'll speak to you.
Do I need to repeat the question?
The clarity's a comfort. But minor, minor changes in the EIR, they, they really want to stress that they, they should be minor. That typically will include edits, grammar, that kind of thing, any sort of mistakes that were made in it, that's a, that's a common error. It just happens in large documents. Those kind of minor changes are, are, need to be described essentially in the final document. What was changed in the draft? The issue really becomes, if you're trying to make changes that are significant, that require any change in the project description, or re-analyzing any particular environmental factor, that, that's something that gets you into the threshold of recirculation. So, yes, you can make changes, changes in language, you can make changes in alternatives, and that was described in Director Hunter's presentation. That basically, as Mr. Colas stated, happens at the time of certification of the final EIR. So, if, say, there's a mitigation. A mitigation is intended to address an environmental impact, to reduce it to less than significant. However, there may be several mitigations that do the same thing. This draft EIR presented perhaps one mitigation that would improve that, or improve that situation. If you wish to choose another mitigation, one that you consider to be more palatable, more feasible, that is in your purview to do. However, the justification for that needs to be very well stated to the public, so the public understands your reasoning, it needs to be presented in the findings at the time of certification. If you chose similarly to change an alternative, that process itself would be in a public forum, in a public debate. Your reasoning for doing, making that modification to an alternative needs to be as publicly accessible as possible. However, if you chose something that is significantly different, then that, again, reaches a potential threshold for recirculation. So, for minor changes, it's just that, it's present it, make it, tweak it to how it's something that you want to have certified, and then have that reflected in the ordinance. I want to maybe take one quick opportunity, if I could, not to speak too much, but to that last question that was asked, just to really stress that the ordinance drives the EIR. The EIR is reflective of the current list of policies, the current ordinances as they are written. The option in front of the board is to change those ordinances, and then relook at the EIR. Or, keep the current ordinances and accept the EIR. Any future changes to the ordinance is a future political, policy creation sort of activity. It's something that you can choose in the future, it's essentially unknown. This was locked in place in this EIR, because it is what is now. It is the existing ordinance. We can't project what you wish to do, or any future board wishes to do in the future. That is up for you to decide. However, at that point, the EIR, it would have to go through some sort of environmental review as well at that point.
Kim, would you mind explaining for everyone, obviously, we've taken some extra steps these last few months having these discussions, but it will go to the planning commission, so I think, I don't want people to lose sight of that after whatever the board decides today. Then can you explain the process from here going to the commission? And eventually, it'll come back to us.
Yes. So, based on the direction received, we'll move forward with, with half chosen and start to, well, either one, well, let's, let's say, let's say we go with option two. In that case, we'd be preparing the final EIR, we'd go directly into that process, which would have had, you know, would have occurred, had we chosen to gather more public input for additional meetings to get more feedback on the, on the EIR. So, we just pick up, start preparing the final EIR, and then that would go out. If it's not a public comment per state law, it's just a review created, it's released, the final EIR to the public, and that, by law, is a 10-day period minimum, it can be more. And then that would be scheduled, released, and coordinated with the scheduled time for the planning commission meeting. It'd be presented to the planning commission, they also, they'd be making a recommendation, and in their recommendation, they could easily recommend a modification to one of the alternatives to you, and that would be very possible to happen. So, the planning commission would review the document, they would have the choice to send it back to staff with further direction, or make a recommendation and move it on forward, but ultimately, there'd be a recommendation. The time of recommendation, then, the item would be scheduled for the board of supervisors, that would be another public hearing, and that would be, they would be considered for consideration and certification.
Thank you. So, before we open it up to the public, there's some gathering in, in the door, and for your health and safety, you're at asset, we put some chairs, we'll just take a pause before we start the public comment. If, if you are clear, and you know you're going to be speaking, I would ask that you would, if you know which one option you would like, that you would state that. Sometimes, when you start talking, it's not clear, so if you know that you have a preference, if you would please state that, that we can keep track of. Thank you.
At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Again, please, if you know, you'll choose one or two, it'd be appreciated if you would clarify.
My name's Patrick Condon, and I'm from the River. I'm from Sawyer, but more specifically, I'm from the South Fork of the Trinity River. So, I got an email, and I'm having trouble getting here on time. I apologize for that, I was the first person in line. I had to stop, took me an actually 20 minutes. But, so I got an email, and, and I just wanted to run this by you, because I have questions. I didn't have a chance to see all the options, so I can't tell you what the best option is. So, the way to present that is, an option that not only includes more people, but includes myself. I'm here feeling desperate to be included. So, I have a existing cultivation, I have a CE with the state and the county. I also have a CUP in to expand my cultivation, because that's the limit to my license. I can only expand my cultivation, and that's what I'm trying to do. But I also saw that as another option to further my environmental review, to put more paper across the desk, to try to make sure that I get to keep cultivating in this county. So, I want to, as I have always, want to take every step I can to represent that side of the industry. I have been in a CUP for over a year, so I wanted to answer Jeremy's questions. It's been over a year. There's been limited back and forth, there has been some progress, I've been told, but I don't really know where I'm at in that process. So, if you're entering a CUP, get ready for a long period of time. It's been over $6,000 plus consultant, so it's expensive to get that CUP. But one thing I wanted to address was something that I read in an email, and I thought, since all of the professionals and all, everyone's here, maybe you could clear it up for me. The options two through four are all reductions in licenses to 280, and banning future licensing in the South Fork of the Trinity watershed. So banning future, I don't know what that means as it relates to the, to CEQA, the EIR. I've been to a lot of the meetings, I went to the meeting down when it was in Burt Ranch. I've listened to these gentlemen multiple times, and I've talked to my consultants, and I'm still having trouble understanding whether, what existing is, what future is, and how you're going to include not only more people into the process to make it stronger, but how you're going to protect and keep this program moving along. It's actually been four years, this will be my fourth year of renewal. I don't know how to renew yet, I think it's getting a little bit late in the timeline, maybe since I last checked. I don't know of a renewal application. So, I don't know the best, the, the best number, but my number is, is to protect my ability to continue, and to try to extend that word to other people who'd like to participate. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tom Belanco at Douglas City. I'm in favor of number one plus. And I've been saying the same thing before we even hired Ascent, it's reflected in the notice of proposal we sent out, what we do with CEQA here needs to tier to the programmatic EIR. The Ascent guy, when he was still under contract, used to come here and say, "Oh, that program, programmatic EIR was for state licensing, it's not actually applicable to local licensing." You have to go all the way into the part of that document that says intended uses of this programmatic EIR. This programmatic EIR may be used by other agencies to support their evaluation of environmental impacts and issuance of permits or approvals in relationship to cannabis cultivation. These agencies may include cities and counties throughout California. Without tiering to that document, it leaves the county in a place where it has to fill in all these blanks and be redundant on what the state is already doing, what the state recommends. There are certain topics delegated to local land use authorities that are beyond the scope of CDFAs jurisdiction. These topics include aesthetics, land use and planning, noise and odors, compliance with building standards, provision of police and fire protection, and connections to public utilities. If you listen to what people say, all the growers are going to come up and complain about things that are under the province of state regs already. Why are you regulating our water? Why are you regulating all our bio resource? And all the non-growers are going to come up and talk about, "We don't like the, we can see greenhouses from the 299. The lights at night make it look like a UFO landing. I can smell, I don't want it in my neighborhood. I like a car. We should have focused this EIR on the things that are specific to local land use. That's what Ascent was contracted for, that's what they should deliver." And, I, I mean, I feel like I have ownership in this, because it, it's actually cultivators who are paying them. It's going through your contracting, but we need to send this back to them, get them to do their actual job, focus our program on what we have the capacity to do. The worst thing we could do is continue to take the majority of regulating under our own planning department. We don't have a staff biologist, we don't have staff hydrologist, we don't have staff geotechnical engineers. We have, finally, somebody with experience and competence in our building and planning department. I don't want to see that enthusiasm and energy get squashed by overburdening what that department is supposed to do. Let's tier to what the state has done, and then focus on what local issues we have. Thank you.
I'm Joseph Bauer. I'm here today to represent myself and Safe Alternatives for Forest Environment. I think the board needs to recognize that going into year four, this is a failed program. In four years, you've only managed to regulate about 5% of this market, or industry. You're, you're responsible to regulate land use on all of the land in Trinity County, not 5% of the, that the growers are licensed to operate. So I think you don't have a viable alternative as presented this morning. I think you need to throw the whole thing out. I think you need to, first of all, remove this cap, and give everybody that wants to grow in Trinity County a year to come forth, pay their fees, and get a provisional license to be inspected somewhere along the line, and then start an EIR that covers the whole county in terms of land use for cannabis growing. The, the way you're going now, I think, is a dead end. You have a failed program that you're trying to analyze with an environmental document, and leaving out 95% of the growers. It just doesn't make sense. So I would urge you to, first of all, throw this cap out, start over again with a focus on the whole county, and give growers a year to show up with their money and their application, and then cut it off, and from that point on, have a fine for growing without a license in Trinity County, a meaningful fine of a thousand dollars a day, that would, if not paid, accrue as a, as a lien on the property. So, throw out what you started, and get something that's going to work going, so that we have a viable program that will license everybody that's going to grow in this county, that will stop the environmental degradation that's happened here. We have a poisoned county because of the county's lack of enforcement and growing, regulating the growers. So, please start over with something that makes sense.
Terry Mines, Junction City. Completely disagree with what this gentleman just had to say, and completely agree with what Mr. Belanco had to say. That being said, I think that we are in year four here, this is a long process. Alcohol took 20 years to regulate when they went through prohibition, so this is just a process, a lot of ups and downs. I think it's good we're here talking about this and getting on the right program here. This is something that is, when, when Mr. Bauer is talking about the farmers that haven't signed up for this, we need to give him another year, I don't know what the last four were about. It's kind of like, you know, I guess I don't understand that. I think enforcement is coming. I think whenever the state took in all of our money, it took them probably a year or two to make the Way It Works proposition, you know, and everything, then they clicked up their billion dollars from all the state of California, then they go train the people, they hire them, then train them, and then enforcement shows up, usually in about year two or three. I know they hit Bloxburg, Humboldt, they're hitting all the cities of LA. Enforcement is picking up. That will show up, it takes time. Trinity County's picked it up, I know that aren't Bateman's picked up, I don't know how, I don't pay attention, but I know that if you think that you're going to keep continuing down the black market, good luck, I hope it's successful for you, I don't, it's not in my, it's not in my way, I'm trying to be in a regulated market. People that don't want to do that, that's on them. This is for us regulated farmers, it's not to get people into this again, it's for us to clean up our act and tighten it up. I just think that, thank you for putting all your time and effort into this, because this is beyond crazy for all of us, it really is, and I think, just take a deep breath here, think of good logical thoughts like what Mr. Belanco had to say here, and I, I'm in with what he had to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carla Avila, I'm from Hyatt Palm, and I really appreciate you taking the time today to discuss this, and all the time that we've been taking for months now, but it is really important. I have to say that Terry's right, and although Joseph's also right, we can't just expect that prohibition ends in a, in a day, and we know this from history. The options we're facing right now, there's really only one choice, we have to rewrite the project description, and there's really no really better alternative, because it's, it's just inherently too flawed. because it's, it's just inherently too flawed. We're talking about cumulative impacts and the problems of like, overregulation is one of the problems why people don't want to get in, but regardless, we're here to talk about the cumulative impacts, they're not, it's not mentioned in the project description how law enforcement and our program participate in that, and that has to be included, I don't see how it can't be. That's a really, really big flaw where you're just ignoring the fact that there's, part of the program is to address the unregulated issues, and also if we had retail, we would be getting a lot more money from the state for regulation and law enforcement, and we would also be able to have, we could have an equity ordinance, we would get monies for that from the state if we had retail in the county. So it's, it's going to be a long haul, but we can't give up on, on the successful businesses that started four years ago and are now, you know, successful legal licensed businesses, and we have to look past the discrimination and keep moving forward, and really the only thing we can do is be honest about, yes, licensing benefits the cumulative impacts. We cannot shut it down at 280 and be short sighted about what the real purpose of what we're trying to do here is.
Hi, I'm Charles Menken of Hayfork. I want option one. Honestly, if you guys adopt, take it, adopt this EIR, it's going to force me to move my business out of this county. I, I, it's, it's really that simple, you're going to hinder me in a way that I can't grow. I'm developing a hybridized ag model that's going to bring other jobs to Hayfork that have nothing to do with cannabis.
Is it possible for a child to be a public company? Oh wait, is it okay with the cannabis, will you give permission?
I don't want to.
Okay, she prepared a letter.
Good morning, Mr. Bauer. Not a lot of great options, I have concerns about both of them, but the idea that option two, we can have some minor changes, I don't think anyone in the room is worried about the grammar in the document. There are significant changes that need to be made to this document for it to reflect the realities on the ground here. And I would like further discussion on if it's beyond grammar, we can't do it, it would require recirculation, because I believe if the true findings find that any of the potentially significant impacts are really less so when real research is done, then I don't believe it needs a recirculation, so it's great, that could be discussed afterward. But some of the non grammatical changes that need to be made are an assumption of 15 seasonal employees for a 10,000 square foot farm, a 44,000 square foot building for an average 10,000 square foot farm, four hours a day on a quad, excessive generator use is listed, assumptions that no one lives on site when a dwelling is required, black plastic fencing increasing, it's prohibited, odor, move indoors, against state law, monitor well levels monthly, that's not good for anything. So it's not grammar that's the problem with the current option, it's more significant, but I believe if the real research is done, that it will show that impacts are less than stated, and hopefully that that wouldn't require a rewrite. Every licensee does need a document to tier off of, it can't be done if it doesn't reflect reality on the ground, and I would really like a commitment that local data will be used in whatever option is decided. Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I would like local data to be used in the document.
Good morning, my name is Brandon Hall, also of Hayfork. I would for option one, if only because if this EIR goes through, not only will I lose my job at a cannabis production company in Hayfork, my father, who runs a consultant business in Hayfork, will also lose his job. That is roughly 40 to 75% of my family's income down the drain. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, my name is Debbie Lono, I live outside of Hayfork, and in a general sense, I would like to say that we do support the board adopting option two, however within increased number of licenses or no cap. By adopting this option, although the document may not be perfect, it is long overdue and it prohibits us from moving forward. Once it is completed and certified, the county can amend it as needed to reorganize ongoing, to authorize, to reorganize ongoing expansion and other aspects of legal grow operations throughout the county. To be clear, we believe the DIR is imperfect and it doesn't quite accomplish its stated project objectives as outlined in ES 2.2. Specifically, the mitigating measures outlined in the sections ES 3.1 through 3.16 fail to include language regarding emphasis on enforcement of the measures, nor do these measures address the impacts of density of the number of commercial operations in various communities as described in section 3.11-1, potential for physical division of an established community, where it states no mitigation is required. Mitigation is required, some of our communities are physically being divided, and it does indeed cause neighbor division as well. Again, the project objectives stated in the document are not met in actual practice. The goals, as stated, are to ensure that the regulated cannabis, ensure a safe place to work and retire, protect the quality of life, and, and ameliorate detrimental impacts on communities and neighborhoods. Addressing the needs of enforcement are very key, and appropriate density of commercial grows in our outlined communities and neighborhoods is critical to obtaining the goals of environmental balance and sustainability. Again, this is not a perfect document, and we do believe everyone who wants to be legal in this county should be able to have that opportunity and should be encouraged to enter the program. Legal operations are environmentally important. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Miguel Hinaosa, also a resident at Hayfork, and like another one of my peers had said, not only would I lose, I would lose my job, and that takes out a big income for me and my family, and, but also I feel like a lot of people are not open, their eyes aren't open to the positive effects that cannabis could have on this county. Because I was born and raised here, so I've seen this whole process from, you know, zero legalization, you know, completely legal to where we are now, and I just, I don't think people are seeing quite the positive impact that we could have growing cannabis on the county, not just economic but social, and it's, you know, we could, I would appreciate, I mean personally, if donations were made locally, I'd like to see more of a social impact from the cannabis farmers locally, because I just don't see that with a lot of people, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
From what I see, I don't think we have a very open mind to what cannabis really can do, I think we're really trying to squeeze this industry. I do know that if an EIR is not perfect, you can be sued over it, it can throw a monkey wrench into everything. So from what I hear, I haven't been able to read through the whole 2000 some document, that it is not perfect, and we really need it to be perfect so that our program is protected. Worse comes of worse, I would opt for option one. I don't want anybody to be, to leave here or to lose their jobs, and I think that's very, very important that we consider that, that there's all these impacts with the other options. And again, we need some time obviously to get the EIR correct, and I don't agree on caps as well, from what I understand, there's thousands of cannabis sites, and we want to include them by putting a cap and these high costs on them. We are discouraging people from becoming legal, and so we need to really, really look at our costs. I do understand a programmatic EIR will help reduce costs for the growers and other businesses that we should be embracing, but we definitely need to do it right, or it's of no value whatsoever. Thank you.
Andrew Franklin Junction City, and I'd just like to say, I think this document is deeply flawed. I attended the presentation at the Trinity, Trinity Outperforming Arts Center, and at that time, the, the one glaring error that I remember was about water usage, where 17,000 gallons a year was listed at 17,000 gallons a day. And the gentleman kind of just glossed, oh, we fixed that already. This was a college paper and someone turned that in, would the professor take off, mark off for that, or he said, oh, here, hand it back, and we just fixed that, you know, after it was turned in. So it seems to me that this document was not very well prepared, they didn't really seem to understand the people or the communities or what they were supposed to do. How they approached this project from a very basic level seems, seems very flawed to me. And a lot of people think that too, and also just want to say that about the cap, the cap is, is kind of silly when you're trying to bring people in, into this program and make it an inclusive program. This is Trinity County, and there are a lot of outlaws here, and you're never going to get everybody, you know, but at least we could get more of the folks that are a little closer if we can keep the program open and keep the program accessible to people and keep the costs down so they can get into it. Just, I don't know if anybody's looked around, the economy here, there's not a lot of engines, and put a cap on it, and it's one of the few engines that we have that's moving forward, that's making people money in this county, that's providing dollars for our businesses, that's generating tax revenue, be it property tax revenue, all kinds of tax revenue. I also like to echo Carla that, where is retail? I know that Supervisor Chadwick and Brown did some research on retail, and we really need to get to retail and get some more funding, so I support option one. Thank you.
Marie Peterson, Long Term Trinity County Resident. I have a question for Mr. Cole. I was under the impression that new alternatives require recirculation, and so I want to know what the difference between modifying an alternative and presenting a new alternative is, and where is that threshold?
Yes, normally we don't interact because it's actually eating your time, so if you're willing to give them your time.
That's fine with me.
Your time won't be stopped going into management.
We do have some leeway to adjust alternatives, and the alternative proposed in, in option two is not a substantial amendment. So it's when you're really rewriting an alternative, in other words, the, the proposal with option one is to go back and just completely redo the cap and just lift the cap altogether, that's an entirely new project, whereas what we're proposing is really just a slight modification, and the 500 number has existed previously. So it's not, we have some leeway to do that and stay on course, it's just the type of revision that's been proposed with respect to just lifting the caps altogether, that's a, that's a game changer, and so that does require us to recirculate.
And so that modification is different than alternative one because you would still adopt those 60 honoris mitigations, some of which are illegal?
Well, the 60 mitigations was a rough number, I, I mean, there's probably more than that, and I don't, okay, I don't subscribe to the idea that the mitigations we propose are, are illegal, I think they're legal and I review them, but I understand there's a, there's a difference of opinion, and, and that's fine, but that's my position legally.
I personally support recirculation of this document. Regardless, our farmers are going to be without a certified document for a majority of the year, and I think it's important to get it right. Also, I do just want to make the comment that we are still lacking, the public is still lacking clear messaging on the renewal process and the Sequo process for this year, for each farmer.
I'm Steven Jordan from American Cannabis Partners, District Five. I just had a question, and I yield my remaining time to anyone that can actually answer. Is there a state mandated deadline for this EIR? I know we had it in July 1st of 2019, but since that point, from this point forward, has there been one given, and if so, could you guys get us that? Thank you.
Go ahead, Director Ken.
The, the, the original deadline was July 1st of this year, that was in the SB 97 legislation from 2017, that was extended this year until July 2021.
Good morning Supervisor, this is Justin Hoffman. Earlier I passed out some information for you guys to take a look at, and I think my main point is that the project description currently doesn't match our real program. And our program really has two prompts, there's a carrot stick, it carries the licensing program. The stick is funding the sheriff's office in code enforcement with cannabis use. Under Sequo, project is the whole of the action, and that's why piecemealing is illegal. They want the whole of the action, not just what happens within this ordinance, but the whole action. So last week, there was an ordinance amendment for, it's 8.90, that came forward, we didn't vote on it or anything, but it talks about raising the fees, the fines for cannabis enforcement, and it talks about how it's connected to the licensing program, I mean, they reference it in the staff report multiple times. So I think what's going on actually is that there's an attempt to segment the project into the carrot and the stick and have them separated, when really they need to go together. And if we actually understood the cumulative benefits that come from having enforcement actions, they're not acknowledged in this document. The document looks like it's really bad, looks, makes us look terrible, because we're not getting any credit for helping clean up the cumulative impacts of the community through the licensing program that needs to go to the sheriff's office. I'm not even beginning to make up anything that's outside the program, I think just asking to have the program analyzed as it is today, and has been the whole time. Finding number 24 in the urgency ordinance talks about this, that we don't have enough money for code enforcement, so if we have licensing, people will voluntarily, voluntarily comply, and then we can go ahead and enforce on the rest of the legal farms. It was in the original urgency ordinance, the language got changed, but there's a clear attempt to segment the project. And so what I would say, and it's in the packet I gave you, it's the actual language for piecemealing, that does say that it's to divide a project into smaller projects to qualify for 1 or 4 exemptions. If you go into ordinance 8.90, the original, I think it's ordinance number 1320, the very end that I highlighted for you in there, they say that they're going to seek categorical exemptions for those enforcement actions, seven and eight, it's in the document. So they are going to try, if they're going to use cannabis fees for enforcement, and that money never comes back, and we don't see any credit for it, and they're going to ask for an exemption, that's piecemealing, because they're separated and they're looking for an exemption for part of the whole project. Our whole project. So I would just say that, also, Sequo requires those decisions to be informed and balanced, and it must not be subverted into an instrument for the oppression and delay of social and economic recreational advancement. That's Sequo, the guideline, section 15003 subsection J, it's in the packet I gave you. Don't allow TA to pressure us into going forward with a flawed document.
Hello, my name is Sebastian Cantaro, Junction City, I'm in support of option number one. I think the document is based on a lot of wildly inaccurate assumptions, and there's a lot of good local data from, you know, actual farmers that are in the program, that we should be using, because it's supposed to be a scientific report, we should be using real data to do this report, I mean, do this report.
I guess I'm escorted the first option two for these reasons. I don't want to go too far.
I don't want to go too far back, but I'll go back to 2016, late 2016. Anna Self was in this room, three of the Supervisors here were here, too. And we heard Liz McIntosh stand up and say, "Hey, we need to get off CEQA. This is a really big deal, part of the program." 2017, numerous times, "Please check your minutes. Please check your minutes." We've known about this. Everybody's known about it. Let's fast forward to Hayfork meeting, where the EIR committee told us, you know, this erroneous, gave us this erroneous report. They said they were rushed. I heard it at least three times, "Oh, we were rushed, we were rushed." There's no reason to be rushed. This was kind of a sham, it was set up in a bad way in the first place. Limiting anything in this program is good against the program, even stacking. So I'm standing here, trying to represent, because I'm a licensed cultivator myself, representing the entire county, but also farmers, and that, that should have been there in the first place. And I remember why it wasn't, because it was this hype of, "Oh, the corporations are going to rush in. They're going to buy all the land, you know, to shut our local economy down. They're going to take all the money away. Let's make sure that they have to live here for a year first." Okay, that was good. And we won't stack permits. We won't do that first. Let's wait on that. We're still waiting. Did the corporations rush in? I don't see any of them. Why are we doing this? We're stabbing our county in the back? Economic stability is what I'm trying to talk about, and you're limiting it intentionally for years. So let's at least do Option 1, start over, think of the entire, the whole picture. There shouldn't have been a rush. We need to do this right. Thank you.
Matt Hawkins, Weaverville. I'm just here to echo most of my fellow farmers, saying that this thing really needs to be recirculated. It looks like you got this data out of Salinas or Santa Barbara or something. This is mostly mom and pop farms. And just some of the stuff on there is just so wildly inaccurate. It just, I don't see how you can go forward with that. It's the foundation of what you're trying to build, and it's flawed. So I think you got it, unfortunately, for everybody involved. I think you have to recirculate it. Thank you.
Good morning, Board and Chair. Adrian Keyes, Hayfork. This has led me kind of at a loss, because the one thing that isn't really, that I'm even more unsure on now, as I was when I got in here this morning, is what does it look like for getting licenses next year? And I have no, I have no information as to what that looks like. So it really makes it difficult to make a decision about what alternative to move forward with. It seems that the alternative 2 is the one that would get us into licensing. It bakes in these like clearly erroneous and just like bizarre world assumptions in many cases. And then we hear that, well, those can all be dealt with through a modified alternative, which maybe the 530 licenses isn't the worst thing in the world if there's a provision for people getting a CUP who want to come in afterwards. I mean, we barely cracked 50% of our licensing capacity here. And we still are not getting licenses out in timely fashion. We still don't have any idea what the process is going to look like this year. So, and I just don't know who to believe anymore. I can't tell you with all the contradictory information which one of these paths is better than the next. We need much, much more clarity on what this year's licensing looks like. After last year, where the state took up to eight or nine months to get people licenses, like myself, it makes it really difficult to look at another year of just losing money, waiting for some process to take place that I'm paying for. You know, and that money will run out. On the one way or the other, with this lack of clarity, we're going to cause harm to our county. We need to come out and finish this project, get people to work, and worry about the people who aren't in the program later, in my opinion. If there is another 3,000 people that want to come in, well, then they can deal with that. We've been here for four years trying to get licensed, trying to get to work. And we've all gone into the state program, and track and trace is in full effect. You don't have to worry about waiting for that any longer. It's happening. Between this type of prohibitive ordinance, or difficulty in our ordinance, and then the prohibitive ordinance is out of this county, well, in the county, too, revolving around retail, this isn't a time for the people in this county who are trying to move forward to be clammyered. We need to be quick and nimble and active out in the commercial marketplace. We don't, I mean, it's mind-numbing how much time and energy this has taken out of all of our lives and the things that we could be doing with that time and energy otherwise, like providing jobs and doing volunteer work and making, you know, contributing to the nonprofit foundations in our county. But instead, we're like, "I've no idea if I'm going to be operable next year." And so, "The gentleman gets me licensed this year," is in my judgment. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Larry Winter from Hyatt Palm. I want to first state that I only have a license for 25 plants. There's only four of us in the state, but that's licensed, that are legal right now. And so there's a lot of issues in this document that I am not aware of, because they don't affect me. And it's such a big document that I didn't even try to understand what the issues that a lot of people are going through right now. But water is one of my issues, that I defer water during the winter months. But the issues I have, I brought up before in the last meeting, why we aren't bringing in the state regulations in the front end of this planning document. And I was told that just isn't how CEQA law works. Well, the Sand Environmental also did the document for Yolo County. And they, in determining the level of significance, the analysis assumes that the project would comply with relevant federal, state, local regulations, ordinances, and regulations. They do include the state Water Board policies in the front end of the document. So I don't understand the discrepancy that we were told that CEQA law just doesn't work that way. The other issue that I just don't understand about banning new grows in the watershed of the South Fork Trinity because it's a priority watershed, as if that's an environmental good. When the State Water Resource Control Board, in coordination with California Department of Fish and Wildlife, this is from their own website, have identified cannabis priority watershed throughout the state. They have a special environmental concern and are at risk, increased risk of environmental impacts due to cannabis cultivation activities. The State Water Board and DFW intend to increase both permitting outreach and enforcement efforts in cannabis priority watersheds. Our main goals of establishing priority watersheds and developing a public online mapping tool for those watersheds are to, the first two bullet points, improve voluntary regulatory compliance with State Water Board's cannabis policy and CDFW's Lake and Street Bed Alteration Agreement Program. That's just the opposite of what they're saying that mitigation measure will accomplish by banning more grows. The second bullet point, increase permitting enrollment for the State Water Board's water rights and water quality permits and DFW's LSAA program. So to put that in, first off, by not allowing the state regs to be in the front end, where it can show that they would cause a less significant impact, we don't know, because it hasn't been studied from that perspective. It allows a mitigation measure to be included, like banning grows, new permits in the watershed in South Fork. Doesn't make sense of what the state is reading for the priority watershed.
Okay, so what I'm handing out to the, Brad and Tarbell, Hayfork. So a lot of people have brought up the assumptions used in this EIR. And this document just touches the surface. It's a survey of 15 licensed farms here in Trinity County to show the difference between our actual impacts and the assumptions in the EIR. So for water usage, the difference between the actual data in the EIR assumptions, water usage 1.8 times lower for our actual impact processing building size, 35.7 times lower than the EIR assumptions. Heavy machinery use, 21.1 times lower than the assumptions used in the EIR. And then trips per day per harvest to each licensed farm, 21 times lower than the EIR assumptions. So I really urge the Board to use the actual data from this program. We've been here for four years. And really putting us inside of this box with these cumulative impacts, it's not going to do us any good in the long run. It's going to hurt us. So we need to take this back to the drawing board, and we need to do this right. There needs to be grower input on this so we can get this right the first time. In other areas, like, you know, this document just sort of gets in the way of itself sometimes. You know, it talks about monitoring septic systems so that they're sized right for the number of employees. This document says that each cultivation site is going to have 15 employees, which is not going to be allowed in the first place. The, you know, the septic systems are not going to be able to process that. So that's just another area, you know, where the document is just contradicting itself. So we really need to go over this with a fine-tooth comb and get it right and make this workable for everyone. And I also agree with others' input that enforcement needs to be a part of this document. Our funds, our cannabis licensing funds are going towards enforcement, and that is a mitigation, that is an offset, that is a restorative effort that needs to be done. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board. Lisa Wright from Lewiston. I hadn't really planned to speak to this, but hearing all the input, I wanted to provide some additional feedback. So certainly, we need to look at Option 1. I would recommend that that's the path that you take. Mr. Cole had mentioned the AB 97 that was passed last year, extending the CEQA compliance period for local jurisdictions to July of 2021. It actually extends it to January of 2022 for provisional license holders at the state level. So we have some time. I think errors were made. I don't know how the project was scoped, you know, by the original consulting company, but to come up with the alternatives that you were presented with, I think that, I don't think they did their job, as well as many of the findings that everybody mentioned here. What I would suggest is that you adopt a new ordinance to adopt the state regs, streamline the process, grandfather, do you find this humorous, Mr. Cole?
You have time to speak?
I know. Adopt the state regs. Grandfather in the existing cultivators who've been in this program for four years and been complying with the exorbitant county ordinance as it stands now, excessive regulation at the local level. Create that personal grow ordinance that allows for the medical, up to 30 plants. I think you'd take probably a chunk of the 3,000 to 4,000 illegal grows out of that equation just that way. Many people just want to be able to grow for their family and friends for medical purposes. Apply good land use planning to the, and ask for a conditional use permit for non-egg zone properties that would be coming on henceforth. By grandfather, everyone else, too. Put, get a memorandum of understanding in place with CFA for law enforcement. There's money out there that's available. We're not capitalizing on that now. Instead of trying to penalize and further regulate and downsize and constrain this industry that's trying to grow and merge and try to establish a better environment economically for this county, you have to encourage the business development. There's nothing else here. Don't tax it, don't over-regulate it, don't fine it. Try to find ways to work with it. You saw the families here, and their children, they depend on this. We could grow our communities this way. So please, in addition to tearing up the CFA P EIR, is very important. We could have spent probably 50, 60, no more than 100 grand to do that. Instead, we've already spent hundreds of thousands. So I ask for your consideration in adopting the Option 1 and redoing this. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any movement, so John?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Staff. John Brower from Junction City. And we continue to hear many of the concerns that were provided in comments to the draft EIR. The county has sat and stared at that draft for seven months now and literally don't know where to start to clean it up, correct it, revise it, into anything that makes sense here locally. The, to do this right requires really three big things. You need time, money, and expertise to get this right. The Governor's Trailer Bill, not AB 67, that didn't pass. It became the Governor's Trailer Bill later in June, gave a two-year extension. There's the time. And the word from the Governor's Office is that counties and cities that are trying to get this right need, may need additional time, and they'll probably get that if needed. The money. So we've got, we've got time. Money. Program participants have pumped at least $6 million into this program over the last four years. We've got money. It's there. Growers have paid for it, as they've paid for enforcement. The expertise. We now have a Director of Planning that's very familiar with CEQA. She's done heavy lifting on CEQA documents before. We have money to staff up. I think there's a will amongst the Board to put more resources at her disposal and support her. The cannabis community is strongly in support of what we're asking her to do. But we know she can't do it alone. I think the growers, Ryan, Tarbell, that presented that bit of data from the growing community, very helpful and should make this easier. The consultants are sitting on mountains of data. Some of it is wonderful data. Water Board's got data. Fish and Wildlife has data. There's a lot of data out there now. We can do this. I ask the Supervisors, please direct staff to pursue their alternative number one immediately, without delay, and give them the resources and support they need to get this right. We wasted seven months. The existing document has many fundamental flaws. So many that I really don't think we can turn this sow's ear into a silk purse, period. It's a futile exercise. But we can redraft this thing in a thoughtful way, using real data. If we get started now, we've got the time, we should have the money. Let's just encourage the expertise to get it done. Please, please, choose alternative number one without delay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dana from Hayfork. Thank you for the opportunity to deal with my fear of public speaking. I would like you to choose alternative 1. I'd like you to scratch, since the contract is over with your agency, I would like to see someone hired that sees success in the cannabis industry and has written successful EIRs. And rather than hamstringing the process and wasting the time and money, that I would fire you as a contractor if you were working on my house. So that's how I see it. I agree with so many of the brilliant minds in this room to set up a viable future for the industry. If this is weak, we know we'll be sued. You know, you know we'll be sued if this is a weak document that moves forward. You know, you know we'll be sued if this is a weak document that moves forward. I have faith in the industry, in our community, and the county and government. We can succeed. There are high hopes. There are many hearts and minds actively working to make this succeed, me being one of them. I have very big dreams and I'm very project oriented. If you can believe in the people in this industry, like myself, we will bring in more money into this, in this county than any other northern county. I can say that much. We have better resources than Humboldt County, believe it or not. Our climate is better. We have access to I-5, which is easier. I could go through the list of why Trinity County is the best county in the Emerald Triangle. And we know, it's a fact, that the Emerald Triangle grows the best cannabis in the world. Take advantage of that opportunity. Let us brand our county. Thank you.
Bringing it back to the board.
I'm sorry, real quick. I am in favor of option one. And also to give you an idea, when you were asking about the total cost of the CEQA documents, for our last permitted, state and county permitted, $12,000.
Do you want to state your name for the record?
Oh, yes, Jeff. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for all your work and all that's going on here. You've heard a lot of very good input and I'm amazed with the knowledge we have here to present you with. One, we need retail in our county. Two, Larry said, the state regs need to be at the front end of the document and use the local data that Ryan was talking about. Use the information that we have available to us to write a good document. And use enforcement and, thanks Patrick Catherine and everyone. Thank you, and option one.
Okay. No movement, so we're bringing it back to the board. And we are under a little bit of a time restraint, so unless there's anything pressing, we... EIR? Yes, we are.
Derek answer questions?
Not all of them. I do have some questions for Derek. Okay, so I'm not going to call for a recess. We're just going to continue if the board wants to do that. Okay, go ahead. Okay. Does anyone else have questions first now? All right. So I guess Derek can tell. So I know back in October, November, at the T-PAC, the water issue did come up and it was told to us that that number would be adjusted because there was a mistake. And has there any other additional water data been looked at that we've heard locally that we're aware of?
So I don't want to speak out of turn to that because that was compiled, I believe, by, it was Hubbard and Ascent, but there was some review of the existing water board data that was collected during, within applications for the county. I don't have those numbers in front of me. Principally, I can say though, those numbers are all over the place and some calculation was what the data from those packets actually was greater than what Ascent had estimated. It could be less. It's variable, it's all across the board. So the water question's very hard to get to specifically based off of that data that was collected. The assumptions were used based off of publicly accepted information from a number of different counties.
And the water that was listed certainly was a mistake. I think it was gallons per day versus, or vice versa.
Clarify, that was in a footnote, an asterisk footnote within a table of assumptions.
Okay, and that will get corrected?
Very soon.
Okay. Where do I begin? Just for some clarification, as we've spoken about over the many, many months, stacking is, been worked on, but is in limbo. It's not been neglected, it's just we can't move forward or the ad hoc couldn't move forward on stacking until this is finished. So I didn't want that to be missed and think that stacking has been pushed aside. Derek, there seems to be some confusion that license holders are certainly subject to CEQA versus everybody out there that is growing. Is that a correct statement? They think that anyone who's not licensed is subject to this.
If someone is illegally growing, they're not following the process.
Right, but there seems to be some understanding that they think they're subject to CEQA as well.
The illegal growers are not subject to CEQA. They're subject to enforcement.
Right.
You know, we can take enforcement action and we, and as I understand, the county is, and can shut them down entirely.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that that misunderstanding was clear. Speaking of enforcement, we've heard a couple of comments today on enforcement and the thought that it's not wrapped up into this project. Can you delve into that?
Sure. The project, so the project looks at a timeframe. The timeframe is, we enacted ordinance that creates a licensing scheme. And so at the time we take that action, we have to, as a programmatic action, analyze all of the impacts of that programmatic action. So that's, 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 the timeframe is when we take the action. When a licensed grower then comes to the county for an application to cultivate, they, we, we look at the conditions that exist as of the time of their application. And we're looking at, do we issue the license? What standards do we apply to the license? What are all the mitigations we apply to the license? Enforcement is something entirely different. Enforcement happens at the back end and enforcement is intended to do two things. One, it's intended to address the people who are not in the system at all and should be in the system and are basically scoffing or scofflaws. And, and, and so we obviously can devote resources to that. And then also people who violate the terms and conditions of their licenses. That's not a segmenting issue. That's an entirely separate issue that doesn't involve the actual action that is being taken, which is to grant a license or to create an ordinance that allows for the granting of licenses. Enforcement is never, in other words, a developer gets a subdivision map and permits to build. You don't analyze the fact that the developer might violate the law and then account for the enforcement of, 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 of the city or the county's actions. That, that's an entirely separate issue. I understand the general concern that was expressed by that speaker and others that we need to maybe more aggressively pursue enforcement and I have certainly legal concerns about that. But that's an entirely separate issue that has nothing to do with the actual action that is being considered for purposes of CEQA.
I think they were trying to make the linkage that the program pays for a certain amount of enforcement and therefore really wasn't highlighted in the document. And maybe that it's, maybe it's not.
Those are funding issues. Correct.
What else did I make some notes on? In terms of alternative two, I mean, I know Director Hunter pointed out, I'm going to go back a moment, into option one, would take us more time and we'd put more cost on those needing to do their own environmental work versus stay in the course and adjusting some minor options there within alternative two. Alternative two, as pointed out by the public, no new commercial cultivation will be allowed in the priority watersheds. Our program requires that somebody gets the state water board permit, which covers a lot of that water issue. It's no new commercial cultivation. When somebody is in that watershed that wants to expand and the parameters allow them to expand, does that limit them as well? So let's say somebody has a 10,000 license in that, one of these watersheds, and they want to go up to an acre. Because we say no new commercial, does that constitute new because they're expanding? And I'm just hypothetically making sure we're not going into a box here.
I'd have to look. I mean, that, that sounds like something that we can address at the, at the drafting stage. In other words, I, I don't, because we don't have the document here, I can't pull up the actual mitigation measure. But I think that's, that's an issue that we can address as we actually implement the EIR. And we can, and I, and I think we can reflect the board's attention on some of those nuance, excuse me, those nuanced issues.
Okay. And then my final question, I can't remember the answer to this, but back in '17, we did a NAGDEX, some NAGDEX work, I believe. Did that get folded into the analysis of our current draft that we're looking at?
That was a part of this, the material supplied to Ascent in review and document review, basically when we both did the RFP, I believe, as well as this document itself. So some of the supporting information that went into that draft MMD that was not certified, some of that supporting information was definitely included and referred to in this draft EIR. Is there something specific from that draft MMD that you're...
No, I just think that gets overlooked and I just wanted to make sure it did and that it did have some place in this drafting of this recent document.
I would say that it did have a place, yes. The way the RFP with Ascent, or sorry, the RFP and then the contract with Ascent was originally written was to explore through the initial study process whether an additional MMD or billing off of that MMD or an EIR would be a preferred route. At a, at a certain time, the decision was made by staff and by the department to pursue an EIR specifically and not an MMD.
Thank you, David. All right, I think that's it for now. I may have some questions. Thank you.
I don't know who could answer the question best, but after hearing everyone's comments, I'd just be curious, so how would a rewrite, what is the worst case scenario for a rewrite affecting current licensee holders?
The, the worst case scenario is that we have to do an initial study for every application that comes in in 2020, which, which is a couple of month process and is more expensive and time consuming and could not only affect them that way, but also will throw off their timing and getting their state license.
And the county needs to do the initial or the individual can do that?
Well, they can do that. I mean, they could provide the information. They, they can hire a consultant and really streamline the process. And certainly that's what staff, where we, where we have been requiring initial studies, that's what staff is encouraging. But that's, I mean, that's at their expense and they're footing the bill for that. And so it's puzzling to me why we would risk that and not do the option two because it, in my opinion, hurts our license holders to go a different route. And in fact, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me. Option two is truly the right option if we want to streamline the process for our growers.
And also add to that, that even if the initial study is drafted, we are still looking at it, still our document is a lead agency. So again, it has to be approved by the planning commission and it's our document. So there could be changes to it. So even with a draft, we're looking at it, make revisions. The better quality the initial study is that we receive, the less work we have to do and the quicker it's going to be.
David, did you want to say something? You look like you were...
I usually have that expression. I can't add it originally.
If you felt you had additional information that'd be benefit, I would appreciate you to go ahead.
We're requiring those decisions. I just wanted to add something that I had mentioned earlier was the idea, if 150 roughly, licenses were issued last year and perhaps another 150 would be issued this year, each of those licenses would typically need some sort of environmental review, an initial study. That initial study could direct you right back to a CE potentially, but more than likely, it's going to direct you toward a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. So worst case scenario of 150 provisional licenses, all with an initial study, all with an MMD, all of those would have to be reviewed by the planning commission. We have data that shows when those licensees are up for renewal to the state, that documentation should be provided to the state in time for their state license.
Please stay.
I just want to follow up on that. So would the provisional license allowed to be cultivated while he's doing the initial study or would we have to wait until the initial study or the environmental documents?
I don't want to overstep my bounds in my, in my current position and speak for the program itself. May I refer to you or take a stand at it?
We have typically allowed that with some trepidation. And, and, but the state is allowing that and so we have, we have tried to follow the state's process and to respect the fact that there's two levels and we do not want to, you know, put more onerous terms and conditions than the state. So we are allowing folks to grow, but the problem is the process isn't complete and so technically, there's some uncertainty if they go ahead and they're cultivating while they're processing an initial study.
So they would be more vulnerable to suits?
Yes.
Go ahead. Kind of some follow-up either for Derek or Kim. So I think we heard from our existing license holders, they want to be able to keep moving, especially those who've been with us since day one. It's now four years. They've jumped through a lot of hoops to get their business going. Option one, which is where you just recirculate and do a lot more different work, how does that affect our existing license holders? They just keep business as usual and continue to go?
Already, we're, for the provisional licenses, we are encouraging, highly recommending that initial studies are underway.
And then if you're a new applicant, my understanding is you certainly have to turn as much as possible in from day one to get your license process started?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just trying to analyze the difference, certainly for those who are existing license holders versus option, versus option two, which is, option two is kind of keep moving forward, which I appreciate as well. Keeping the thing moving forward and keeping it streamlined. So, but I'm just trying to see, what am I missing here that is a major difference besides cost to the applicant, as Derek pointed out? Anything else that I'm not seeing? Maybe I'm not.
I think that Keith kind of pointed it out with exposure to liability. A moment ago, Derek pointed it out time-wise. It will take much longer.
Anything else besides that? Cost? Cap and costs, okay. And then the question brought up about the season, how the season would go with option one. Concerned about that.
Kim, without capacity.
Capacity. As the elephant in the room.
Do you have capacity to do 315 individual environmental documents?
We do not. Again, that's why we're encouraging those with provisionals to get started on their initial study, get underway as quickly as possible. And the timing of studies for biological, various studies are, you know, time sensitive regarding season. But the capacity, even, even if we receive excellent draft documents for each one of those provisional licenses to review, to write a staff report for, scheduled for planning commission, to get approved by the planning commission, that's where the capacity is needed also. That's staff time to get it prepared, even if we're handed a beautiful initial study, that's perfect, which is very rare, but even in the best case scenario, the capacity is limited.
So. Follow-up, Madam Chair. So if the board was to move forward with, with what you are recommending... are recommending, and somewhere in the next year, a policy changes that we need to reflect in a new document, is it then just an amendment is done to the EIR to capture that new change? And is it less time to do it that way?
Yes, it would be an amendment to the EIR, either a supplemental EIR or subsequent, most likely a supplemental EIR that would analyze those additional changes and would build off of the, the product. If we did, if we moved it forward now, it would build off the product that was certified, say, in the next few months.
Okay, thank you.
But, but I do want to emphasize that you can, there is a two-step process, and it can be done. And it, it obviously may have some additional expenses that the county incurs because you're going to be doing a staged process. But I think the trade-off is that, look at the cost to the growers if, if we don't do that staged process. It, in my opinion, and I think in staff's opinion, makes it much more difficult, much more time-consuming, and potentially much more expensive for them if we, if we do that process.
So Ken, I'm going to, I'm going to try to, like, bring things into focus.
I do have a series of questions.
Okay. Our current licensed cannabis farmers, either one of these options will not have an effect on this year. Is that correct? If you are a licensed farmer right now in Trinity County, option one and option two, there will be no, nothing different for them to, to renew their license. Is that correct?
Yes, because going out the timeframe for each alternative, we're well into the growth.
So our pre-existing farmers will, will continue their business as, and our capacity, even at that level, is maxed out. So capacity across the board, whether you're currently holding a license, or now we're going to go into provisional. The existing provisionals, you're encouraging, and you are going to continue to take new applications for the license. And those on a provisional will also be encouraged to do their own SEQA work, correct?
With, with the provisionals, with the existing licenses that are provisionals, that SEQA needs to be underway is very important. With the new licenses, that's, that's the unknown. And...
Okay, so with, with that, that is the specific question. What is the difference in option one and option two for those new people coming in, not our pre-existing, because they're, they're taken care of, the new people coming in? What is the difference for those people if, for option one to option two? What is the difference?
I can, maybe I can, I can jump in as staff can supplement. I think for people who want to come in, option one, option two is, is even more optimal, because option one, because if we complete the EIR now and we implement the mitigation measures, the idea would be that we can tier at the license approval level, not only for the existing growers, but also new growers. And we will have streamlined the analysis, we will have done the analysis, and in many cases, it may just be sort of a check-the-box. If you do all of these things, we can issue you a license even though you're a new grower. So for them, it will actually be better. If we want to bring in new people right away, option two is optimal. Option two is the best option.
So, yes, please.
I guess I believe Derek is essentially correct. The EIR is specifically written, basically, in, in three different columns, you might say, in terms of the mitigations. Those mitigations that apply to existing sites, expanding sites, and new sites. It took into account the idea of the, the expansion of the program at that point, 280 licenses to the full cap of 530 licenses. So it meant to apply mitigations to those varying situations. So if a provisional were licensed, an applicant were coming tomorrow to do the provisional, AB 97, AB 97 says that they have to show progress on SEQA. If you have a provisional, you have to show that your, your, the discretionary review is in progress. So I would suggest, from my position, that it would be responsible for the program to require proof of that type of progress, and they can define that however they want. So if that were started tomorrow with an applicant for a provisional license, and then the EIR is certified, well, they've done that work in terms of showing progress, but as soon as that EIR is certified, then you start checking those boxes, applying the appropriate mitigation, and you're approved through under the SEQA compliance on the program. However, if not, if the EIR is not certified, or that you're going with option one, and it's extended out for, for the timeframe, that individual provisional license would have to go through that entire initial study, entire MND process, all the way to the end through the planning commission before that SEQA document is then something real. So the EIR is option two. That, you know, truncates the process, I guess is one way to put it. Another scenario, if someone needs to come in for a, or a renewed license and application in July, just to put a date out there. If at that point, the EIR is already in progress, then they just apply the mitigation monitoring and reporting program that is now part of the ordinance and the performance standards that's part of the ordinance. It's a much simpler process. I hope that's a little bit clear. It depends on how the provisional license is staged and what type of work an applicant would have to do until that point the EIR is certified, either over option one or option two.
And, and the most important thing is our legacy farmers that are currently licensed, this will not have an effect on us, correct?
I'm sorry, what specifically would not have?
The legacy, the people that have been enrolled for four years, this, this, these options are not going to have an effect on, on them. They will continue.
Okay, to be clear about that, each license renewal, annual renewal, is an independent county agency action. And because of that, it needs to have discretionary review applied to it each time the county takes an action. So each time that comes in for renewal, a CE needs to be issued for that, if there's no other SEQA documentation that covers it. If the EIR is in place, you don't need that type of continual SEQA discretionary review because it covers the entire program. Without the EIR, as individual agency action needs to apply discretionary review, regardless of if you're a legacy farm or not. That is the benefit of the EIR. It streamlines the process through the length of the program.
If I may add, if we take the example of a legacy farmer, as Mr. Kolbeck has said, there's about 100 that receive categorical exemptions. And the categorical exemptions generally have been issued under the idea that the current cultivation, or the cultivation in the forthcoming license year will be exactly the same as it was previously. In other words, there's not going to be any disturbance, disturbance of new grounds. There's, there's not going to be the creation of new structures. You're basically just going to do exactly what you did the previous year. And so I would assume a number of our current licensees who have the categorical exemptions may want to expand. They may want to cultivate new areas. They may want to expand plant counts. We can't do that on a categorical exemption. So they're now kicked into an initial study in order to expand their existing operations. So they're going to incur those, that, the time, money, and expense of, of an initial study, whereas if we had the EIR in place in a few months, we could take the mitigation that's in that EIR and really streamline their expansion. In other words, it may be that all of the things they want to do through their expansion are, are covered by the EIR, in which case, it's a quick analysis, it's a quick checkoff, and then they get their license. So again, for, for legacy growers as well as new growers, option two is by far the best option.
So I have some more comments, but I know you want to follow.
Yeah, could you follow on that? Nobody explained on legacy provincial growers. Provisional growers. What, what would happen to that person?
Well, I mean, if it's a provisional, then they're, they're still kicked into the process of, of, of an initial study. So it's not maybe a direct impact for them, but if, if we have an EIR in place, and we have all these mitigation measures, these 60-plus mitigation measures that we've studied, and they've been implemented, and we've adjusted our ordinance to account for them, then these provisional growers might be able to take advantage of the same thing. In other words, there's a whole list of things that we, our consultants through the public process have come up with that didn't exist or weren't considered at the time of our original ordinances, and now we can incorporate those into our ordinances, and it becomes, again, a check-the-box. In many cases, a check-the-box. Well, did you do this mitigation? Did you do that mitigation? That'll all be incorporated into the ordinance. And even for those provisional growers, it can streamline the process for them. It streamlines the process for everybody. I can't guarantee that there might not be a few sites where there's a couple of impacts because of unique situations that don't get caught in the EIR because there's just, you know, a really unique watershed, a really unique environmental condition. But even in those situations, we can focus just on that. And our staff time in order to analyze that part of their, their site is, is, is much quicker, it can be done much, much more effectively, won't get bogged down, and, and those folks are also, in our opinion, moving through the process faster. And then we're kicking them to the state and letting them get to the state and get their state licenses faster.
Supervisor Morris?
Everything is done in that section. Do you have a list of questions?
Go ahead. I have a quick process question that I forgot on my list. We heard talk of, we can do some minor changes in this alternate to option two. We know we want to go from 280 to 530. We are going to adjust the error on the water issue. Besides grammar, what other things can be adjusted, either maybe through the PC process? I think that's important for the public to know.
One of the thoughts has been to add an additional chapter, just outlining the benefits of legal cannabis cultivation, to give it, you know, its due, in, in the positive impacts of that. It's been one. That doesn't affect the, the documents effectively. Calling that out. And...
And I guess what in the document, if a member of the board says, hey, this is missing, or this is too, these too restrictive, where, how far can we go in changes?
As, as David mentioned as well, you know, mitigation measures can be altered, you know, same effect, but maybe this language or this, this measure isn't, isn't appropriate.
Well, I would add that, that, so the way the, the process works, it's kind of awkward because we refer to an environmental impact report, but really, there are two iterations. There's the draft, which is what the, everyone in this room has seen and has commented on. And then there's a final environmental impact report. And just, I know some of you, many people may notice, but the final impact, yeah, environmental impact report is not a recodification of the entire draft EIR into a new updated document. It actually is, is a document that describes the disposition of all of the comments that were received. And then it has some of the, the things that Director Hunter is mentioning, which is, it will go through and analyze mistakes or, or data. I mean, it, it will provide updated data. And I've seen a number of these, and this is not the first time I have seen a situation where there were estimates about water usage or, or some aspect that, that, you know, were determined to be incorrect and it were corrected. And that's, that gets done in the final EIR.
Right. I think it was important to describe all that process. Thank you both.
Follow-up on that, Mr. Kol. What have other counties done? Like, what would be an example of a drastic change or a minor, major change that was done between a draft and a final?
Because I, you know, I, I wasn't working with the other counties. I think there's Humboldt, Calaveras, Yolo. I know our consultants could probably answer that question and give you a number of examples. I don't know if, I'm, I'm sorry to look at our staff. I can't think of, of an example off the top of my head, only because I was not involved in, in those EIRs for those counties.
Further, if any of the other components have been vetted through the PIR draft, either through additional alternatives or options, but if the information's been vetted through it, can it be applied? So can a piece of a different alternative, would that be something that can be in between a draft and a final, is that content that's already been vetted and reviewed and analyzed can be moved around or not so much?
The...
Adjusting.
Does that make sense? Can I repeat?
Can you repeat the question? I apologize, Supervisor Brown, if you could.
So within the four alternatives, is it possible to pull pieces out of those alternatives and reapply them to the other alternatives because they've already been vetted through the data that was supplied?
We do have the ability to adjust those alternatives somewhat. I, I don't know, the degree is fairly minor. I mean, those, those were analyzed. If, you know, if we, if we wanted to combine some of them, that's, that could be done. But, but I mean, we can't, we can't come up with entirely new alternatives. That, that, that is something that would have to require a recirculation.
Thank you. I'm going, did you want to follow? On the recirculation of the document, if there were specific things, only those specific things need to be recirculated and not the whole document? Is that correct?
Yes, you can, you can recirculate a section of the document.
And essentially, when you, when you recirculate, you always, when the agency says, let's recirculate, it always needs to make a clear record of what's being recirculated. And so yes, there are some recirculations that can go pretty quickly because the consultant work product doesn't take a long time. But the, the, the public review, I mean, you're starting all over on public review. So that, you know, there are certain three or four months that you're going to lose no matter what, even if it's a relatively insubstantial recirculation compared to a wholesale rewrite.
For instance, if you just, you just take the traffic section out or blotter and just work on those sections. However, with rewrite and the project description, likelihood is you're going to be, you know, mattering on the changes made in that project description. That could trigger a whole document review, or recirculation.
So the EIR is based on our ordinance. The overwhelming numbers of the stakeholders here today who have paid for the program, approximately, without going through each one, approximately 20 of them, prefer option one. A non-stakeholder wanted option number two, and there were several that just didn't know because they didn't feel like their choice was good. Repeatedly, we have heard over the last year that the concern is in our ordinance. And, and we have a fatally flawed EIR because the perception is, and the reality is, the ordinance is flawed. We can't fix the EIR unless we correct the concerns that are in the ordinance. That's what I'm hearing from the stakeholders. I also don't know if we'll ever be at this junction again, because if we continue with the EIR, the way it is written on this ordinance, my concern is, we won't fix the ordinance down the line. So I have a couple of questions to help me formulate an understanding that they don't mind. If Trinity County was to adopt the state regulations as our cannabis ordinance, and if Trinity County was to adopt the state and federal guidelines, if Trinity County requested that a stakeholder, a licensee, complete their state packet and enrollment, and brought their completed state, not with their license, but completed state license to the cannabis counter, would that expedite because they've already fulfilled the, the necessary requirements at the state level? Would that help our capacity? And what would prohibit us from adopting that? Would that help our capacity and what would prohibit us from adopting that?
Madam Chair, you're asking a political question.
I'm asking for direction with understanding based on what I heard today. It's not a political, I want to know the capacity. If we simply agreed to what the paying people through this licensed program have requested, I just would like to know some answers.
I did not hear that question asked at all.
Lisa Wright asked, I think Patrick asked, Jordan asked.
I definitely asked.
May I, may I, may I respond and then staff can respond? And I'm, what I'm hearing, Madam Chair, is there have been some comments that the county can simply follow state regulation. That is, in theory, something the county can do, but our current ordinance, which is governing our program, our ordinances, we have actually several, do not, they go much, they go beyond state regulation. They go well beyond state regulation. And so what would have to happen is essentially some type of repeal and replace. We would have to repeal our existing ordinances and then we would need to replace those ordinances with some streamlined version that basically says, we're going to follow the state's lead and we're going to only require what the state requires or maybe we'll look at a few other things and here are those few other things. That's a sequo project. And so we would, in order to switch from the program we have now to this very streamlined, state-centric approach, that itself would be a sequo project and we would have to do a sequo analysis of all of the impacts associated with switching to a more robust local program, which we have now, to a less robust program that is basically tied to the state. And I think, as our consultants have said, the state does look at many areas, but I think even the speakers who have spoken today have recognized there are some things like traffic patterns, odor, and, you know, maybe some of the local watershed issues that don't get caught at a programmatic statewide level. And so we would have to analyze the effect of going from a more robust program like we have now to a less robust program, and that's probably going to require a whole new EIR.
So, but my understanding is if we do change the ordinance at any time, then we are required a whole new EIR or modifications? And so what I'm trying to understand is why, if we go with option two, we are less likely to amend the ordinance to correct, say, it was brought up, I forget how many times, I lost track, just that alone. So that would redo it. So if we're recirculating and we're redoing it because it's based on an ordinance change, then shouldn't, wouldn't it be hopeless to make all the changes we want before we recirculate and redraft an EIR?
Well, that's, and again, that's a policy choice for the board to make and staff and legal can't make that for you. What we can say is that there's two ways to go about it. There's that way, which is let's just figure out all of the changes we need to make and let's just do them now and let's take what we have and then essentially not start all over, but let's take what we have and let's totally look at this holistically and make all of the changes that we want now and take whatever time we need to do that. That is one way to proceed and that's effectively option one. The problem is that we have a time constraint, which is that we have a licensing period that will start, I mean, obviously not all growers are on the same licensing period, but we're essentially going into a growing season. And so the 2020 growing season is upon us and then we'll have the 2021 growing season and we have the concerns that have been expressed by staff, which is that our individual licensees for the current coming calendar year and maybe the next calendar year may be vulnerable in a number of ways if we don't adopt this EIR now. There's some exposure issues legally that they could have to deal with, but there's also the fact that if we're going to wait for this programmatic document for another year or so or more, then in the meantime, we have to require each of the licensees to put more time and money and their effort into the current year's process, which means more consultants, more cost, possibly mitigated negative declarations, which is a multi-month process. And then you also heard Director Hunter say that we may not have the capacity currently for that. So that's the trade, in other words, the trade-off is that, yes, we could do it all, if we had our druthers, we would do it all and we'd take the time we need to do that, but if that's the approach we take, we sacrifice what will happen in the next year or two years because of just the fact that we have to do site-specific sequo review for every, as Mr. Colebeck has said, every license approval is a county action. And so, you know, our position as a staff, our recommendation, not our position, ultimately the board will make the final call, but the staff believes it is in the best interest of the program and all of the growers if they can continue to move forward this year and into next year, and so that's why we're recommending option two.
Can I make a point of order to address the question that you had and he's addressing right now as I brought up in my...
No, Patrick, this is actually, this is unfortunately, that's not, I appreciate that. You have your left, is that...
No, it's John's.
Yep. I have a question. Will there be any blending of current ordinances, adjusting current ordinances to come in to relationship with, if this EIR moves forward? Do you have any plans, plans for that so that they're more homogeneous? Or homogenous?
Homogenous. Consistent?
Right, consistent. Imagine that.
Yes. I think blending the ordinance into one ordinance as a whole is the intent and with that would iron out those wrinkles and it must be consistent.
So you do have a plan?
Do have a plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is that why you're opting wanting number two? Because you have a plan? I'm answering your question for you, just nod your head.
Okay.
Thank you, Director.
I do, I do just want to point out something that was in the presentation that Director Hunter made earlier. It's, it's a notion of in the final EIR is the idea of, yes, you need to readapt the ordinance, get them all into one as a way to do that. There's also a way to tweak that, that new ordinance and readopted ordinance, where you can make small changes to it there, but knowing those beforehand, you can put those into the final EIR. You can state in the EIR, this is something that may be coming down the line when this ordinance is readopted. If you state it in the final EIR and you describe it and you express it to the public saying, and this is consistent with our existing analysis, there is no additional environmental impact for this small tweak to the ordinance, that is just a good way to kind of, you know, button it up, button up the final EIR, allow some minor changes to the ordinance as long as they're minor. As soon as you hit another environmental impact, then that's...
And I think that's what the board's request earlier was by multiple supervisors, was an example of what that is, because when you say earlier it was spoken, it was grammar, now it's a minor change. And so the change that the farmers want is to pop the cap and that would not be considered a minor change. So that means that before we pop the cap, we would have to do an additional addendum to the EIR and that is not only costly, it's also timely. So what I'm hearing from the community at large with their desire is they want to get it right, they're willing to put out the time. Can you give us an example, a specific example of a minor change that would affect the farmer?
Multi-year licenses, set of annual licenses, process for opt-out areas, identification of exclusion areas, regarding zoning to...
Sorry, definition, is that right?
Exclusion areas.
Yeah.
Of identifying exclusion areas based on topography, hydrology, or geological consideration, and a revision of the cannabis cultivation setback variance process as it is now. Those are some examples you threw out.
I want to have a clarifying question. So if somebody comes in at the next step in the final draft and there's some information that's incorrect, so we'll use this gentleman's, we don't use heavy machinery like the document says, can that be changed at the next, you know, with each other, so at the next planning commission level? Is that supposed to be done by comment in the draft letter?
That's something that I think can be incorporated into the final environmental impact report. That's something that is a change that's not substantial, that is clarifying. So I don't, you know, those types of things, and that's why we have a public input. So I don't see, that's an example of a change that absolutely could be made.
I agree, yes.
Okay, so the one point I want to make on that is on what level it's substantial, the fact that he claims it's 24 different than in the EIR significance, it may not be significant, but not substantial. So let me use something, I know you're...
Very blank stare.
So I'm not sure on this water data, but I'm going to use acre-feet. So actual data says 9.4 acre-feet versus 17. I'm not sure that's the number three or, if that's the numbers, I'm not sure if it's acre-feet or not. But in the overall view, even though that's almost twice as much in the document, that difference is not significant in the mitigations.
So yes, it's a great question. How can you change the data or the assumptions and what impact is it going to have? So if the EIR is saying 17, and I'm just going to spitball this, so please, 17 gallons a minute per square foot per year versus nine. If, in reality, for that survey, that additional small piece of data that was just received, received and presented to the board, if that is less than what was actually analyzed in the EIR, well, the EIR took the numbers that it could, it justified them, it stated why it took those numbers and why it believes it's correct. If the board were to think that maybe that's too high, okay, those numbers can be walked backward if it's the will of the commission and the board. They can be walked back, they can be adjusted. If you were to increase it, say, no, in reality, it's 25 gallons per square foot per year, that's a much more significant impact. That would probably require the analysis and the circulation to decide, is this an additional impact versus less of an impact? I do want to point to the board, for that specific question of water usage, I understand this number has been in public formatting, debated quite a bit, and that's appropriate and that's good, but to look at the mitigation that came out of that and to look at the mitigations that come out of any of these debates about the data and the assumptions and to understand how those mitigations themselves relate back to the data and the assumptions and determine, is there a gap there? Is this, is this appropriate? Did the EIR handle this appropriately? Is it, or was the consent always used adequately? Is it really an adequate analysis? Is it sufficient to inform you about the impacts of these ordinances? That is the real question I'd like to start.
Did you want to follow? Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to point out, so now that I have the parameters, so the difference between 0.13 acre-feet and 0.25 acre-feet probably very irrelevant in mitigation measures later on. So even though the information may be wrong, it doesn't change the mitigation of the document.
Also, I may add, I've never seen a perfect EIR. We do, you know, it's the environmental analysis, whether it's a mitigated NIGDEC or an EIR, you take the best data that you can get and then you do the analysis. So there's a comment about a perfect EIR, no, we do the best we can and in some cases, it could be better. In some cases, it covers our needs and at the end of the day, once the EIR is certified, whichever option you choose, it will not be perfect, but we do want to get it right. And that effort, I do believe, was taken. Could it be better? Probably, but there is no perfect EIR. Poor data.
Can I ask you real quick on...
Go ahead.
I forgot. Quick process question again, following up from what Keith was saying. So if the report had some mitigating factors on it, but some of the mitigations are already kind of built in into the ordinance, can that be reviewed at the planning commission level or when the final document comes back to us? Maybe it is overstating some mitigation factors when in essence, some of it is already built into the ordinances. So how does that get addressed?
Very good question.
Can you state that one more time?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, you're asking a real tough question, Doug.
Sounds like a roar.
Which is good.
So my question is, in the report, if there's these mitigating, you know, there's 62 mitigations, I think I heard, and maybe some of it's a little bit overdone because the ordinances themselves also have embedded some mitigating factors. So how do you remedy those where one is overstated to what is already in the ordinance?
Well, I think the feasibility is a way of addressing that, which is you can point out that some of the proposed mitigation is already provided for and if there's an additional increment that is being proposed and it's not feasible, then you can address it through the feasibility point. That's the easiest way to do that. If it's redundant and the board can show, I mean, we would, we would want to call that out in the resolution that would set forth the board's position, but if, you know, if we think something is just truly redundant, then we would have a factual finding that says, you know, we're adopting the mitigation measures, but the following, you know, are unfeasible and then there's this mitigation 3.3.21, which is redundant because it's already provided for in existing county code section blank. So, I mean, we would have the leeway to do something like that. You, as a board, I mean, you're not, you have the ability to make a decision. It's not sort of, here you go and take it or leave it. You have the ability to, I mean, that's the idea. You're, you're the legislative body for the county and you should be able to make those sort of decisions.
And the justifications, up the certification, patent officer for easierfication.
And as a side note to that, we've talked about, whether it's this meeting or a couple meetings ago, the traffic issue and the watershed. Are those items being captured by all of you for further discussion at the planning commission? To have that kind of looked at, like, I think I brought up traffic when we were at the T-PAC, that there was some concern on traffic.
Yes, that is planning commission's role and this is advisory. There's concerns.
So we handle there.
Yeah, they will be able to have those and the board is able to look at those too when it comes to reporting for certification.
Okay, thank you. So if, it sounds like we're already out of contract with that consent. So going forward, whether it's option one or two, are we bound to keep a consent or does that go out to an RFP?
We are not bound to keep a consent. It's highly, it's recommended when you, our words may be consulted, but so much work in.
I'm sorry, I would say with option, with option one, we're not bound because you were going to document option two, it would be, I think it wouldn't be advisable.
Option two, it would be, I think it wouldn't be advisable to find a new consultant, but with option one, we're not bound.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who's participating, especially their support for Director Hunter and the desire that she's moving forward and the life directions she's taking. And at this point, I would honor her request and make a motion to move forward with item two, suggestion two as a motion to move forward.
I'll second.
For item two, that's all.
Is there a subsequent? No, I would just add that various elements do get looked at as it moves to the planning commission and we discuss. I just think that, we keep saying we're going to take public input, and I don't think the public feels like they're involved in the, that's my opinion, so would you-
Well, since you opened up the comment, I think-
You just have that very natural-
The fact that I've been at it for 10 years and taken a lot of public comment as Judy, I see the same arguments a lot, and there's been a lot of hard compromises by everybody in this room, the whole community, who have worked hard, there's people that, I've seen this whole period of time for 10 years, that I've watched them evolve in this. And to just, at this point, try to come out and Shanghai that whole process and say, well, let's just throw it away and start over, I think does a disservice to the hundreds, if not thousands, of people that have participated in this program. Nothing is perfect and we have the ability to mold and change and change with the time.
I have a comment on that. I've been on the board now for a year and I can only imagine the challenges that it's good being in this, let's say more of the, in the Weaverville area community, more upriver. I'm sure friendships have been lost, all sorts of fingers have been pointed, and this process, I'd say, has been a very painful process. And that's even just, you know, my one year experience here, being on the board and being part of the county staffing process and seeing how an idea, I have lots of ideas, and to see how the ideas get, have to go through the system and get implemented by staff members, realizing our limited staffing capacity for multiple reasons. It's definitely, I like the concept of supporting staff and helping them move along with the way they see and putting my trust in them. As a cultivator and hearing a lot of the response from cultivators and other people in District Four that have reached out to me, everyone would love to have a perfect report that addresses all the concerns that we've all heard today and for the past six months. And, you know, I think there, you know, if it's not recirculated and we move forward, I do believe that there will be other times where we can approach the, maybe not the factual findings, but the ordinance that is dictating a lot of the concerns of the growing community. Another concern I have is for the existing permit holders and if a recirculation is going to put them into a jeopardized situation. I'm sure many feel that they've already been in a jeopardized situation for the last four years already, so what's another one or two? But at the same time, there could be, I think, unforeseen results that I think could make it a lot more uncomfortable and more challenging for the growers to get through their permit process or lose their permit or not be able to get a renewal. So I just wanted to share some of my dilemma and how, you know, being a cultivator and also being a member of the board and trying to support staff so things can move forward and therefore support the program, it's not an easy choice, I'll tell you that much. I think, you know, I don't think any voice has gone unheard and it's been nice to see today's discussion. I think there's a lot of things that were explained that there's confusion of, at least for me, but I think for other people too. And I think, you know, I wish the Band-Aid had been ripped off a lot faster and that's just not possible to go back in time. And as Keith said, to start the process over again, as tempting as it may be and it could be fruitful and feeling like the information was properly represented and especially in a respectful way to the cultivating community or the cannabis industry, the, to start it over again, I fear that we would have to really start it all over again and we'd be looking at another two, three, or four years of re-debating everything that's been shared and approaching it all over again, kind of under a new guise. So I'm definitely inclined, you know, as much as I love to support the recirculation, I'm definitely more leaning towards option two with the intention of supporting the current licensee holders and not, mostly just supporting the current licensee holders, not worrying so much about the future of the program, but the current program as it is now to get through to the next phases. So just sharing my opinion.
May I have some further questions about that? So option two does ask for the increase to the 3, 530?
That was in our recommendation.
I would ask that whoever, John made that, is that his intentions because of my intentions and what that means.
Okay. Come again, about 530? What are you asking for in option two? I don't see.
Option two, in the staff recommendation-
Right.
Was option two and then with direction regarding alternative two with a 530 cap.
What's the, what's the number again that you'd like to see in there?
The current 530.
530?
To be clear, an alternative two in the existing draft EIR is 530.
That's what I-
Cap reduction, it is only a suggestion for the-
What number do you, what number do you want?
530 is how the EIR is currently written.
Correct. Okay, and you're comfortable with that and that's the direction staff wishes to take?
Yes.
Okay, is that clear?
Yes. There was also the suggestion of adding another chapter for economic development we said wouldn't-
Are we looking at that today?
Something that would be involved in this motion or that, because that was a staff recommendation? No.
It didn't have in my recommendation, it was mentioned during-
So we are not looking at that today?
That's in the-
We have not been given any, have we been given any information on that today, Richard?
Just that it would be, no, no information as far as the intent of it, but it would be a recommendation, if it's here down the road to add that to it, as it moves its way down because I think it's relevant information.
I would like to have that as my recommendation.
Okay, what are you adding to your recommendation?
That in the final EIR document, a chapter is added that discusses the positive impacts of commercial cannabis cultivation.
Okay. You wish it was prior. What's your, what's your question even answered regarding the-
Yes, I just wanted to make it clear to everybody that we are not talking to two any number of-
Got it.
I do, I guess it would wait until I would have another recommendation asked the planning director after the vote.
Okay. So I'm going to bring back my motion to add an addendum to it, add an additional chapter that promotes cannabis in the county. What is, tell me what you want, really.
So it sounds like you need to amend your motion-
Yeah, I'll amend it.
To accept staff's recommendation or give direction to staff to come back with your option two and to include a paragraph to-
Actually, a section.
A section to discuss the positive impact of use of cannabis cultivation.
Okay, and that's your wish?
Yes.
That's my motion. Thank you very much, County Council.
Could you re-read that back for everyone? What is the motion, the complete motion? Tina, did you jot it down?
Option two or amendments to staff recommendation with an increase of 530 in the final EIR and adding a chapter regarding positive cannabis.
Thank you.
So option two is equivalent to alternative two? I mean, I think semantics are important.
They're very different things.
We can't, we can't start doing the back and forth, but I do think that the motion on, before the board needs to be cleared to the board as well as the public, so.
Let me, let me start the motion again, okay? Instead of amending it, but I'm in, do your help, County Council. Draw it. Motion, motion for option to move forward with the current project description and draft EIR with minor revisions to produce the final EIR and complete the cannabis program ordinance amendments. And adding to that, we would like to have a section, paragraph, whatever staff is requesting, talking about the positive impacts or promoting cannabis moving forward, how it makes this work the right way. Got it?
No.
Is that what you, you said that, you make changes to it?
With the cap.
That cap is 530, but that's already part of the EIR.
I have a question for you. It's, there's a motion on the table.
Anybody want to-
I'll second it.
Discussion. So just to make sure, I don't know if it needs to be included in the motion, but I did ask to make sure some of these other subject matters do get reviewed in the process, the traffic. Do we need to put that in there or is that just-
That needs to be in the motion.
Just want to make sure.
Direction you gave, George.
Thank you.
I asked for a subsequent, you said anything?
All right, you got the comment?
We, we're done with comments.
Okay.
Superintendent Grove?
Aye.
Superintendent Fenwick?
Aye.
Superintendent Brown?
Aye.
Yes. No.
I recall this meeting- I had, I had this direction, direction to request. Kim, since this process is taking, well, we're already 220 days past my promised time to take this process, and we have our opt-out area, that proposed opt-out area, I would request that we come back with an option or urges the ordinance to hold that, you know, more tournament balance until this process is completed. I don't know if that's-
Just asking her to agenda is an issue or come back?
Yes.
Just about that.
As soon as possible.
So I'm trying to get Mr. Cole on the phone. I'm over.
And along with, I would like to, even though it was not in our sphere of influence today, I would like to encourage you to bring forward what you brought forward regarding cannabis and relicensing, having in our program.
I have, I have spoken with Director Hunter, excuse me, keep using your first name.
If it wasn't involved or-
12:45, meeting's adjourned.